All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 6th meeting of the Isaguas City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. I am joined, my name is Councilmember Victoria Hunt, and I am joined by Council President Walsh and Councilmember Hall. We have two items of business on our agenda this evening, and we will start off first with public comments. So since I do see there are members of the public who may wish to make comments, I will read some guidelines at this time. All right. Public comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into our decisions. During audience comments, members of the public are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to city programs, projects, services, or events, except public hearing items, quasi-judicial items, or campaign-related matters. When recognized, please unmute your microphone for virtual attendees. Please step up to the lectern for in-person attendees, and we will be using the lectern at the front of council chambers this evening. Please state your name, address, and the relationships with the city, for example, resident, property owner, or business owner. Please speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost, the meeting will continue. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able, and as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isaguaswa.gov. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior such as shouting, booing, clapping, and stomping feet will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, the presiding officer will direct the speakers to return to his or her seat, or for virtual attendees may direct staff to mute the microphone. If a speaker does not comply, the presiding officer may take a recess to restore order. And if a disruption to the meeting occurs and order cannot be restored, the presiding officer may proceed to use options in RCW 42.30.50 to ensure order. Again, public comments are an important part of the process, and we take these seriously. So with that, I will check in with the city clerk first if there's anybody who has indicated that they would like to make a public comment this evening.
Yes, Chair Hunt. We have Mr. Brian Runberg in our audience tonight who'd like to make a comment, and we have one virtual attendee, but they do not yet have their hand up. So I would invite you, if you would like to make a public comment, to please raise your virtual hand, and we will get to you shortly.
All right. So let's start with Brian. Brian, if you could please come up to the lectern, and it looks like it's already on, you can please make your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian Runberg, and I'm representing the owner-interest of the former Red Robin site at 1085 Lake Drive, and try to be efficient as possible in five minutes here, and I'm going to read from notes primarily to keep on task here. Appreciate the opportunity to participate in evaluating the criteria for this Pioneer program. We've been engaged with this for the past year and through the various committees. You have, I believe, got today a letter submitted from Jesse Clausen, Land Use Attorney who was unable to attend tonight due to COVID, outlining some of the issues for your attention on this final criteria language, namely, the two options that had been previously available, the 60% AMI discussed and the 80% AMI discussed. There's the lifespan of the permits, whether two years, we're suggesting it go to three years, and whether it's two projects or three sample projects. Got some comments on that, but I want to focus with you on number one about the two options that were available. The optionality of this AMI selection process was dropped for some reason at a joint meeting last month, and want to bring, propose to bring that back in. That said, I mean, we are completely aligned with your goals and visions within the central Isaguas plan and really have the strong desire to execute that as it was intended. Our understanding and the point of the Pioneer project was about stimulating mixed-use growth and density where it makes the most sense, obviously, in the urban core. It was not really, as we saw or understood about affordable housing. However, that aspect certainly has dominated the debate in the past few months, and our group had worked with Arch and staff in a transparent way to find a way that we could come up with two options that was proposed, and then suddenly this last month that the option dropped out, so there is no optionality. This is a significant, warrants a significant dialogue with proper context, and we haven't had the ability to respond in real time. You know, again, we developed both affordable and market rate housing and produced much or many of that in the region in the past 30 years, and experts in doing so on both sides. And that said, we are strong proponents of affordable housing. To be clear here, the real concern that we have is how to execute that affordable housing, and to try and talk about the fundamentals, it is complex, but affordable housing is, has been traditionally anything 80% and below, and largely funded by nonprofits and operated and with offsets, and availability to alternative financing, either local state bond financing, credit financing, et cetera, whole different array. And then there's market rate. This is apples and artichokes in two different groups, which goes with conventional financing with no bond financing or any advantage whatsoever. It's what the commercial markets will prevail, like you're getting a single-family home on a bigger scale. While recent race market rate projects in the region have been able to incorporate some affordable housing along with the upzoning that has occurred, you know, over the past decade, those examples, successful examples have all lined in the 80% AMI with MFT, and I've been citing many, many examples of that. It's best practice, industry standard, and it works. Commercial financing in a nutshell, the capital markets, they don't really know how to underwrite to 60% AMI. This is a new, a fairly new concept without some, as I said, some offsets, offsets of land or some other bonuses that are not available here to us. So dropping the optionality effectively drops the options on financing and puts the project, not just ours, but all projects, at high risk to be able to execute this. And I just want the group to consider, you know, the 10%, 80% IM criteria in that handout was the definition that you came up with, with your Pioneer project criteria originally. There's a reason why, and it's, as I said, the demonstrated industry. Secondly, about a year ago, council was presented with a commissioned report from Eco Northwest. These are unbiased regional experts, economists, and policy specialists that concluded that the 10% and 80% with MFT was the targeted suggestion. You have that. I don't have access to that, but it was given to you about a year ago. These logical benchmarks suggest that 80% is the right model, so I don't, we don't understand why it's being eliminated, it just opens up more options. We can all appreciate Arch narrowing this down to 60% because that's their vested interest in having a lower AMI threshold. We get it, but we need different mechanisms for executing on that. The rare examples that there are, they're not really off apples to apples, and they're not the significant offsets that we have available to us here. So in sum, is the Pioneer program really about proof of concept, which we understood it to be, to learn for future development, or a combination of EPRIK? Or is it a combination of metric, economic metrics to come together and make AMI work? If so, that's really a narrow slot to fill. We appreciate the ideals of the 60% option, but it's clearly stated in the testimony of, if you read the testimony last month, the Economic Vitality Commission members all came to the same conclusion about the cost of that moving forward, and that's not their just opinion, it's also Eco Northwest's opinion. Having one option is not optionality, and it's, I don't, we also don't think it's helpful in proving proof of concept. So we would like to have the council consider including the two options. We can take it to the market and test it. That's the real value to you. This is $125 million investment into your city, and to be able to really attract capital, we cannot do so with a single model that has a narrow focus. We've designed and developed and produced some, one second.
Yes, if you can.
What, last, last two sentences. "We've developed and designed the most sustainable, innovative, energy-efficient, mixed-use apartments in the nation." We've done it right, so here in this region, we've delivered thousands of, and that are lauded nationally. We'd like to deliver the same for you and have this as a very unique and important precedent for you, but we need some optionality to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will look in the room if there is anybody else, not seeing anybody else indicating to speak in the room, and I will check in again if there are virtual attendees that may want to comment.
Chair, there are no virtual attendees wishing to make public comment at this time.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We will now move into approval of the minutes. There were minutes for the January 3rd, 2024 Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee meeting. Do we have any edits to those? All right. I move to approve the minutes as they appear in our packet. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved, and with that, we will move into our agenda items. So the first agenda item is ID 1568, Central Isaguas Pioneer Program. This would be, this will be presented by Jen Davis Hayes, the Economic Development Manager. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development Manager, and I also wanted to mention that Mike Stanger is here from Arch if you have any questions regarding that. So we're here tonight to talk about the Central Isaguas Pioneer Program, share the recommendations from the EVC and Planning Policy Commission, and gather input to move forward to the next meeting of a full city council for consideration of adoption of this program. And so we are, we'll go through the administration's recommendation, and again, looking to see what information you'd like us to bring back to the full council and/or if you agree with the recommendation. This has been a long journey, starting with, as our public speaker shared with us, the information that was in the 2012 Central Isaguas plan, referring to the potential for a Pioneer program. It was brought up in May of 2023 as a question, why aren't we looking at that? And from there, we started to look at it, came back, had many iterations, wanted to make sure we understood from council what was of importance for this program, since it was something new and requested by council to explore. So, long trail, but we are here today again with a recommendation we believe that will meet our, the needs. So the, again, reminder, you guys have seen this, you know, several times before, but the, the goal of, oh, I think my thing slipped one. There you go. So the Housing Continuum, we always like to show this when we're talking about housing projects, and so this is not intended to be an affordable housing project. It will have some affordable housing, but really, it's looking at the top end of our spectrum on the Housing Continuum. So the goal is to spur development in the urban core and mixed-use zones in Central Isaguas and to provide a proof of concept. Again, we have not seen any housing development in the urban core, and we've seen 344 units in mixed-use zone of Central Isaguas since the plan adoption in 2012. So tonight, our proposal, you've asked us several times, what are you proposing, right? Because we've talked about lots of options. So our proposal is two projects total within the urban core and mixed-use zones. The project size must be between 100 and 400 units, and that's to give enough size to, again, proof of concept, and that can be replicable, but not too many that would have, could have a negative impact on the, on the community. Our recommendation is to have, require for the affordable housing requirements for the inclusionary zoning and the density bonus or development bonus zoning, or program is to provide 8% of the housing at 60% AMI and provide an eight-year MFT, but still require that lifetime affordability for those units, which a lot of times with MFTs, just the length of the multifamily tax exemption. Planning Policy Commission held a public hearing, and they did approve our recommendation to amend the Affordable Housing Code, and with the recommendation that we had on the previous slide with those details. The one thing to kind of note, because Planning Policy Commission addresses Title 18, the multifamily tax exemption is not part of Title 18, and so we did not have a public hearing on that. If we move forward with this, we will have a public hearing with city council as a full moving forward. There is some draft language in your packet, and we're still working with Arch to kind of fine-tune that, and we'll have that final at the city council meeting as we move forward. Some of the options that we want to get input on, so the urban core and the mixed-use zones are the two areas that we looked at. So the, in general, that's the, let's call it all the commercial area of the valley floor minus downtown, right? The urban core itself is more attuned to the regional growth center, and so that is not going to include all of Gilman or East Lake-Samash, East Lake-Samash Parkway. So we could focus on urban core zone only. We, as the administration decided that we wanted to broaden it and had conversations with Economic Vitality Commission, and I believe the Planning Policy Commission as well, about, you don't know where that next project's going to be, and so having that larger area, those are, again, the, both those zones have amenities, jobs, access to transit that are important. And then the, what's been talked about in public comment is, we's, again, as administration, chose the 8% at 60% because of the need for that level of housing, but there was comments and discussion about maybe providing the developer's choice between the 8% at 60% AMI or 10% at 80% AMI. So those are the two options we, we can discuss further with you. So again, this is the recommendation from the administration is to create this program with these elements, and so then we'll, if, we'll move forward to full city council meeting to consider adoption. If it's adopted, then we'll go forward with the process to adopt the multifamily tax exemption portion of that and begin, you know, working with community planning development for implementation and beginning to market to property owners and developers. So that is all for tonight for my presentation.
Thank you. So at this time, do we have questions? I'm sure we do. President Walsh.
Thank you. Jen, I know you said you looked at a top limit of 400 so that we weren't getting super-large projects and that we're able to be kind of replicated. Can you talk me through that a little bit more? Is there any concern amongst the administration if we bumped that up to 500 or 600 or something in that area?
I don't think there would be concern. I think what we've been seeing as far as what projects that have been proposed in these areas have been in about the 300, 400 range, we thought that was, made sense for the market. The one, the one thing that, when we did have conversations with the commissions is that unknown of the multifamily tax exemption. So, and I say unknown, meaning how that's going to impact city finances. There's a, you know, a worry that that would be negative impact, but we also know that, and I'm not going to get into the discussion about MFT too deeply here, but that, you know, that does, having a development also brings additional revenues to the city. So, you know, they worried if it was a 800-unit project that, and there were two of those, that's 1,600 units, and what that does for, you know, the, the community change that rapidly, but also the potential impact to the city finances. So, you know, I think to 500 or 600 wouldn't be drastically different, because it's going to be according to the size of the parcel, and so, and obviously, the development standards of height, limited of height in FAR, because that still exists in our code for this project.
And so, did they have the same cost and revenue calculations that we have in our packet, or?
No. They didn't have the detailed.
Okay.
So they have, they had the general, this is what it is, but then we got to the city port, all that kind of thing.
Okay. So we have a little bit more information than might be able to do that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Member Hall?
I have five, so feel free to jump back if you need to. So I just, I found the Planning Policy Commission, Economic Vitality Commission conversation fascinating, so I have several follow-up questions. Number one, it seemed like there was some disagreement as to where Isaguas stands in the region with regards to planning for affordable housing, whether, whether we're kind of leading or trailing behind, and so I was wondering if you could kind of clarify with the best of your knowledge of that.
Well, I'm also looking to Stephen, too, because he's, chairs the Planning Poli, so, so when you, when you say, and I don't remember the exact details of the discussion, but obviously, we had two commissioner, two commissions together for the first or second time, and so, do you remember the specific conversation?
Yeah, so the, the question was around the amount of affordable housing the city has generated compared to a lot of our neighbors, and the answer is, in terms of volume, the city of Isaguas actually done really well when it comes to affordable housing in the region, but the context of how we got the affordable housing was primarily from development agreements versus through our program, programs. So that's kind of the difference between us and our neighbors.
And that makes sense. I think also the timing, right? So a lot of those, those units were in the Highlands Development Agreement and then additional ones recently, and so in the last few years, they also like, okay, well, that happened, you know, 15 years ago, five years ago, nothing really is in the pipeline, or not much.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I think the contradict, because that's what Arch said in their comments when they were responding to a PBC question, and someone in public comment refuted that. So perhaps they just went and looked at it the same way we were. Okay. Thank you. No, that's, that's helpful. There was also some discussion at the EVC with regards to, you know, something we hear as councilmembers from the community all the time, which is ensuring that infrastructure is in place before construction, concerns around traffic and parking. My understanding is that's much easier said than done, given our limitations as local government, so I was just wondering if anyone could.
Yeah, and I think that gets to a little bit of the understanding of our commissioners about how this works, and so we did, we did share that when development comes, and you know this, is that they are required to do, you know, infrastructure improvements, there's mitigation funds, there's concurrency, all those things happen, and you're right, we, we can't go and build the, we have chosen not to go and build the whole city out for the future development, because that would be really costly, and you would know exactly where, but, but that, I think that's a little bit of, again, education that we can do more with our commission to understand how that works, but the, but, you know, a concern about making sure there's capacity there, and, and when it goes through the, through the permitting process, they will address that and look at all of those things.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, that would be helpful information to share back with them, too, just so they feel satisfied that their comments address. There was also some discussion around that adjusting of the two-year period, two-three-year period, I think it was in the validity section of that, and I'm not entirely sure what the impact would be, so I was hoping.
Yeah, and so I'll also have Stephen Jumbin, if he likes, because we, we actually sat down with our planning staff and said, okay, how long, you know, will it take for each of these, these pieces? And we actually changed it from our original first draft and felt that from the time that the application is approved for the Pioneer project to, instead of, originally, I think that it was to get your building permit, now we're seeing apply for your building permit, that two years should be more than adequate. We want, we don't want to, because there's only two projects, we don't want to lock up one of those projects, and then that person sits on it and doesn't do anything for five, six years. So I don't know if Stephen or we, luckily, we have our community planning development director here as well, if there's any comments about that, but I feel pretty confident in talking, working with her staff that, and the efforts they're doing now, and this is, again, so basically getting through land use permit that, you know, two years is, is enough time for that process, as well as getting your building permit ready, but.
Yeah, you know, there's no magic number between two and three, honestly. If you feel three is needed and that's needed, I think the intent here is not that you are first in the door, you preserve it, and you never do your development, and then nobody else who may be interested in using it can use it. So just finding that right balance of if there's, you know, if you want to do a creative project and can use it, then you have the, we want to work with people generally within that time range. One year is not significant delay. I think the approach that we took was more of milestones, within, you know, 90 days, you submit your first thing, and then as long as you're making progress and you submit your building permit with the next number of timeframe, and then you, then the building code really dictates how long their construction permits are good for, and that's in our building code, and that will kind of, you know, if it's an actual project that's happening, then we keep going, otherwise, you know, it's an opportunity for someone else.
No, thank you. That's super helpful. Oh, there was also some discussion around whether or not to remove this from the affordable housing chapter, and I don't think I understood kind of what the desired outcome for that is, so I was hoping staff could comment on kind of pros of it living in this section versus maybe it seems like some of the commissioners saw pros of it living somewhere else.
Stephen, do a long-range planning manager. So the, the reason why we chose the section in the code where it is, because there is no other programs besides the development bonus program, which is where it sits in the affordable housing section of the Title 18 code. So the pros is we, it's next to a very similar program, and when people are looking for this type of program, it's consistently, at least in the same area of the code. Con is, is the point that was brought up in the EVC and PBC discussion of the confusion of this Pioneer program not being affordability, housing affordability program, but it does, the only incentive is the MFD incentive for the program. And so that's kind of the balance that we were trying to take. The alternative that we've discussed with the city attorney's office is creating an entirely new section of code within that housing section of Title 18, but then it would be kind of a standalone by itself, which would be not as intuitive to look for. So there's kind of the balance. We wanted it to be at least where similar language is or a similar program is in the code.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. And we don't want to re-muck up our code. Just went through that huge effort. So no, I appreciate that. I see the pros and cons there. My last question has to do, so in the draft code amendment, there's approval criteria. I don't know how to phrase this question, so bear with me, but I'm wondering if the approval criteria is limiting in any way, and so I'm hoping you can kind of walk me through, being a city staffer, waiting for these applications. So if you receive, it's done, stamp is, is there from council, and now the program is being implemented, we've done all the marketing, we receive an application from a developer, maybe it's, maybe it's good to go. Does that mean one of two is now, now done, or do we have to do our review, give it back to them? And then also, what happens if it's like there's missing information or something's wrong, and that has to go back? Is that still one of the two, or is it not one of the two until that's been corrected?
Yeah, that's a great question. We are aiming for simplicity, right? So the only requirement, so they're going to be applying for this, you know, potential thing on mybuildingpermit.com, so electronically, and so the, I'm going to go back to the, sorry, this is my, so the, the, the items that the planner would look at is, is this within urban core and mixed use? Check. Yes? Is it a project size between 100 and 400? Check. Are they, you know, do they understand that they need to provide 8% at 60 or 10% at 80, whatever we decide, and they understand, you know, they need to, they'll, we'll put like the rules of the program they signed off. So that is then, you have, again, pretty easy to verify, and then, then, so they have that you're number one of two, or you're number two of two, and then they have to go to the pre-op, you know, land use process, and so then that's more information that comes in. So we wanted to, we wanted to give some certainty, because obviously, if you, you know, quote unquote, you know you have it, then you can, you're going to submit with that information, but if you don't, then you're, you may do something different. So somebody calls, and it's the third or fourth, say, sorry, they're not available. Now, if a project drops out, we'll keep a waitlist or like, you know, let people know that it's, it's time, but typically, if you're farther in the process, you may, it may not make sense to change, but we'll see. Yeah. So simplicity, that's the, the term for this beginning part, because it isn't really about checking all the boxes of the, the development standards and those type of things, but it's really meant to be simple.
No, yeah, simplicity is definitely good in my mind, too. I think, one follow-up question I have is, well, that wouldn't be simple, would it? I guess I'm thinking, what if there are four applications that come in minute after minute, like so close to each other? Do we have any, do we have any flexibility to pick as a city, or would it just be?
We have said first, so you can choose that we could, we could put that in the, in the program, but right now, it's first come, first served, so they would be timestamped, right, as submitted? Yeah. And I, you know, it probably is pretty rare for come in at the same time, but it could, you could. You don't want to create something that doesn't. You don't want to create something that doesn't think about these things.
All right. Okay, so I had two questions, maybe three, now that we've had that conversation. The first one was similar to Councilmember Hall's question on where this lives in the code and how that works. My question was more, this is meant for two projects. And so by design, this code becomes obsolete and also is different after there's one project. And so I'm just wondering, does that mean when we have the one project, we have to make sure that that's reflected in the code? Or that's just part of the project? And then once we have the two projects, do we have to also remove the code and rewrite it? It's, yeah.
The answer is yes, yeah. We would, once, once the two projects are constructed, we would want to remove it from the code. But ultimately, because the amount of time these projects take to get constructed, by that point, we have hopefully had more policy discussions around different programs or something, another approach to get to the city goals that perhaps we're replacing that language potentially another program. To get at your other question of, do we need to recognize one project once it's constructed? I don't think so, just primarily because we're still managing the program. We need the code for that management.
Yeah, okay. So my other question on that is, there, there was wording about we need to have either both urban core or I believe it's one mixed use and one urban core for the two projects. I guess firstly, I'll check if that's right. They can either, they can both be urban in the urban core.
Yes.
Or one can be mixed use and one can be urban core.
Or two mixed use.
Oh, they can be two mixed use. Okay.
Yeah, so it's, 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 if, if you decide that that's what you want us to propose, move forward, that it could be in either zone, it's the first two applications for either zone. Or we could say one and one, right? But then you're creating a little bit more barriers and hoops to jump through. But that's completely possible as well. Okay.
No problem then. That was, that was my misunderstanding. Then the other question I had is, was there, so you, you mentioned that the upper limit of the units was to make sure that we didn't have, you know, something like a huge number of units before we really had time to look at the impacts of this program, because it is a pioneer program. So I wondered if you considered having an upper cap for both projects, but could give some flexibility between the two projects? So something like, together, the program would provide a maximum of 400 units?
Yeah, that, I mean, again, we could, this project, we could put whatever we wanted here. But it seems like it might be hard then for the second project to be feasible because let's just say, we say up to 600, the first project takes 400. The next project may, you know, be on a parcel that's larger, you know, they're not going to build even one building with 200. So it just makes it a little bit harder to try to, if you're the first one in, you get all the spoils maybe. But again, it's, if there's something that, an approach that you think makes sense, but I just worry about, again, creating too many choice, you know, things that, that if ands or buts that then make it harder to try to spur this on for only two projects, right?
Right, okay, that makes sense. So then, so the way this is written, the restrictions, et cetera, are, and conditions are exactly the same, except that you would either be the first one of two or two of two and everything else is the same.
Correct.
Okay, I think those were my questions. Do we have any additional questions? No? Okay. Additional questions at this time? No? Okay. All right, great. So we do have a opportunity for a public comment. Again, we will have an opportunity for public comment after each regular business item. So this time we'll ask if you, there is one member of the public who would like to make a comment. So I'll you up for another comment. And same, same, same applies as before, so five, five minutes, please. And if you can say your name and relationship to the city address for the record, that would also be great. Oh, and this time the microphone was not on. Yes, there's a button. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you again for, for hearing us and, and thank you for the process and the opportunity. I want to reiterate that over and over again. Just a few points that I want to go back to on the previous discussion about having optionality to, to, to make this realistic and to do it. One is on the variables that we're dealing with, on, on land prices. We were able to purchase this land for somewhere around 25 or 30% under what the market is for, you know, per unit, per door, et cetera, those metrics. So we do have some room to accommodate this affordable housing. I'm not so sure the next group would, would have that ability. So that's the reason why we're here and that's why we're sticking it out. But I just wanted that as a context in the background. And, and reference development agreements are a whole different animal that they can factor, as you well know, factor in and project different metrics to, to carry costs and project that in really early. And so those are two different analysis. There was a couple other things on the timing aspect that I wanted to bring into this. One is on timing. We are in, our specific project is in Pickering Place and it has some CCNRs in place, which have inherent conflicts with what you're trying to do for housing. They, the CCNRs currently do not allow for housing, ironically. So there's an inherent conflict. We are trying to work through that ownership, that, those ownership groups to say, this is what the code is, will you allow it? It's taken well over a year to get there and we'll keep you posted on that. The other aspect to that is there's an ARC board that's with that group, which Costco controls. We, we are, there's going to, we have a dual architecture program to, to go through. So we will need some, we'll keep you apprised of that process. But there's some timing issues that, that we don't have control of. I just wanted to put that out there. So then the other thing that I've let Jen aware of, your new Title 18 code come into effect in April. We started this a year ago. We made our feasibility analysis and made it all work to the previous code. And then we said, okay, here's some conflicts that we see. We haven't been able to work through those with them. We're going to try and set up a meeting here in the next couple of weeks with them. Differences between the new zoning code, specifically about open space and building code and how to accomplish that open space. So we'll keep you appraised on that, but we might need some flexibility or some understanding on those kind of things. So those were the, those were the key points I wanted to, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, and at this time I will check in. There are no other members of the public indicating a desire to speak on this item. So I will check in city clerk if there's any members of the public online that might want to speak.
We do have a virtual attendee who would like to speak.
All right. Well, as a reminder, if you can please state your name and address and relationship to the city and follow the earlier stated guidelines, that will be great.
Thank you. I have James Rivard. I'm making you a panelist. You are now a panelist. You should be able to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you wish.
Can you guys hear me as well? Sorry, my camera doesn't work, so I apologize. Also with the Red Robin Project. And I would also like to reiterate, just from a timeframe standpoint, we're really working hard to push the project forward and to provide the housing in the urban core and really the first housing project at Pickering Square. But the three-year, two-years is, well, it seems to be, you know, enough. Particularly in this environment, which we don't know how long it will continue, three years would be much, much preferred. So if, if we can give some consideration to that, we would very much appreciate it. That would be my primary comment. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment?
I have no other virtual attendees with their hand up.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this time then, we will move into our council discussion. And who would like to start us off on these? All right, and then we currently have two questions needed, direction needed for the administration. If the, if we support the recommendation and also if there's additional information or adjustments. Go ahead.
Great. I support this. I think having had the information from the PPC EVC meeting and having the cost data makes all the difference for me. And I particularly appreciate the comments that we've received today and the comments in the PPC EVC meeting talking about, hey, this isn't really an affordable housing project, even though a lot of the conversation is on that. I mean, I had generally said, I'm not in favor of the idea of an MFT for non-affordable housing. But looking at these prices, if we can get some affordable housing and get this as a pioneer project that would be compact housing in a transit-oriented area, gosh, I think this is so many wins. So I'm very comfortable with this. And because, again, this is not an affordable housing project or MFT project and is rather about proving the concept that we can create housing in this area, I'm comfortable with having both options for the developer, the 8% at 60% AMI and the 10% at 80% AMI. I'm comfortable with using three years. And I'm also comfortable with upping the max unit per project. I think the concerns from EVC were sound at that time. But given we now have some general estimates, I know these, nothing is exact because we don't have projects. They aren't, they haven't gone through valuation, but this is super cheap, super cheap. Even when you're taking in the cost to other taxing districts. And there's a whole question out there, how we as a city should handle that, given that it's costing King County and the local school district more than us. But even considering all of that, this is a low cost to get long-term affordable housing and a proof of concept in an area that will be more environmentally friendly and more transit-oriented, more walkable, all of the things that we have been trying. And so let's see, other comments. I think hearing the comments of why this is in the Affordable Housing section of the code makes sense. I do appreciate that the commissioners brought up, this isn't affordable housing, we shouldn't put it off as that. But this is really a code organization and where will developers find something that they're looking for type of thing. So I'm fine with that. So those were my comments. Happy to hear what everybody has to say and see where it goes from there.
Thank you. I have one clarification. Did you suggest increasing the number of units or that we should consider having a higher number of units in there?
Yeah, I would be comfortable having a higher number of units, given that we now know what the MFTE kind of cost estimate is, which was one concern over why we would keep it at a lower number. So I think I'm comfortable with having a higher number because that gives more options to a developer and has more options to provide more affordable housing and prove out different sizes of projects.
All right. Councilmember Hall, would you like to go or?
Thank you. Yeah, I think for the most part, I'm aligned with Council President Walsh here. I don't know what to think about raising the number of units or what impact that would have. So maybe we, maybe if there's not other alignment of the committee on that, that can be an open question for when it comes back to council and there could be some new cost data to show a new upper limit. Yeah, I don't know how to think about that. But I think for kind of the four questions that you seem to be asking, urban versus urban core and multifamily, it makes sense to do both, urban core and multifamily. Whether they're, whether to do, oh, mixed use. Yes, sorry. The, I also think having the developer choice of either 8% at 60% AMI or what was it, 10% at 80% AMI is probably good, especially if we're having developers tell, like professionals tell us that this, this is how, this is how it'll pencil out. And recognizing, having that kind of reframing of thinking of this not as a affordable housing specific program was really helpful for me too. Although I agree with Council President Walsh, this is a great steal for getting lifetime affordability. I, I don't, I'm not sure if that's common with MFTEs, if it's more common for it to end when the MFT ends. But lifetime affordability of a project is certainly making appropriate use of city resources. I see pros, I guess the third question then is the timing, the two years or three years. I see both pros for each, you know, making sure people aren't resting on their, on their designation for that full two years, but also three years with a specific example, but also other things could come up that might limit an applicant's ability to, to finish within that two-year timeframe. I don't know exactly what to think about that. I might lean towards three years, but I'd be interested in, in more staff comments as we, as it comes back to council there. And then also even answered very well why it should live in this code. So I think it should be a part of the affordable housing, especially because, was it the Development Bonus Program is right next to it? So it makes sense for it to live there. I don't know if, if there should be language in there that like, this code will automatically be removed after something? Or, or I also liked what you said about being intentional about, we might actually replace it with a new program. We will have those conversations by then. So maybe it's not necessary to have that kind of language in there. But it seemed like those were kind of the four big, big questions. But if you need any other feedback.
Okay, so to clarify, the administration's recommendation at this point is to have the 8% of housing at 60% AMI, not the options, but you're suggesting we consider having the options? Okay, and you also?
Yeah, I also agree with that.
Yeah, okay, interesting. All right, so I have some, I have different comments. The first thing is I think this should not be in the affordable housing part of the code. It seems to me like this is going to be sunset. I wouldn't want it to seem like we're removing some affordability code options. It's a program that is meant to sunset and it's really meant to be a different part of the code, not meant to be a long-term affordability component to our code. And so I would make it, it's a separate part of the code and then have it be clear. I would also ideally have it be clear that it is only applying to two projects and, and then would be sunset. And so for those reasons, I, I would want it like clearly separate. And then if we expand the program or write new code to have MFT or whatever we decide to do after we get the data back in the pilot, pilot program, then that can be in the part of the code that makes the most sense. But since this is standalone, seems to me like it should stand alone in the code. On the two to three years, the recommendation is two years? Okay. And, and staff has, doesn't have a strong recommendation on this between two to three years?
That's correct. I think we can, that's not a major issue. I, I would say from a policy standpoint, the 8% at 60% AMI versus 10% at 80% AMI is a much bigger policy question. And the city's, you know, requirements under the countywide planning policies to plan for lower AMIs and all of that. And I think a lot of work went into the analysis. So we want it to work for the developers and the numbers because the whole point of doing a pioneer project is that it's used and it's available and, and gets used. No point in crafting a program. So I think a lot of financial analysis went with all of those alternatives. I don't know if you want to get more information about the two options, where, where the numbers stand on both of them. But I think those were vetted out during the EVC and PPC, but they didn't have the numbers.
We actually presented them to city council in the past and I can't remember which meeting it was. But it was in the memo and then the EVC, PPC had. And then the EVC and PPC had those numbers, but not the detailed MFTE by the jurisdiction that Arch was kind enough to create a model for us.
Correct. And then I think the other thing I would add is the city already has no traffic mitigation fees for affordable housing. I mean, there are other incentives that are already in place that this particular project would get to provide that affordable housing. So at what AMI, you know, there is other incentives that will come with the full package for that, which can be significant investment from the city's policy objectives of providing that.
Okay. So correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like staff has a strong recommendation on the level of affordability and the percentage of affordability and not so much on the time, two or three years.
That's why you see this one recommendation that was vetted out with the various options, is my understanding.
So staff chose, yeah, so staff chose to recommend the 8% at 60% AMI because of the reasons that Director Dollywell mentioned is that there's, you know, we felt there was a higher need, that's harder to get in the market. And since we are creating this to, you know, we are reducing the affordability, we wanted to try to get the level of affordability we needed. You know, we've heard comments again, so from the developers about the reason why they made it work. And that's, again, the reason why we're asking council. As far as the two or three years, I think it doesn't seem like it's that big of a difference, especially if in this market and such. I do see that our friend from, Phone a Friend from Arch would like to make a comment. Is that all right?
Yes. You're welcome to.
Hi, Mike Stanger, planner with Arch. Recall the same motivation that Donald Wallace is mentioning about the reason behind the staff recommendation. The one thing that I would add was that in our analysis indicated that the eight at, 8% at eight, sorry, 8% at 60 and 10% at 80 are not equivalent in an economic sense. The lower AMI produces more value economically to the community for affordable housing than the 10% at 80. We'd be happy to provide, you know, more detailed numbers on that if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. All right. So I think for me, the fact that it is very challenging to have the 60%, and this is an incentive program, this is a pioneer program, it's an optional program. I, for those reasons and because, again, that's a huge value because it's very hard, huge value to the community to have that 60% AMI housing because it is very challenging to have that be built. My preference would be to use the staff recommendation and have that one option, the 60%, 8% at 60% AMI. So we have a couple of differences of opinion. I think one thing is that I'm also fine with the three years. So we can all agree that having the flexibility of three years is good. Do we want to do, so the other things that we don't currently have, that we might want to have more discussion on are the placement into the code, although not as important. And then the upper end of units and then this percentage affordability. Okay. So for the upper end of units, I will say I'm good with it the way it is. I do think if we want to consider, if we want council to consider a higher number, we should definitely get the analysis back for how much tax we would be foregoing.
Is there a number that you want, like that would be too high? Because basically, we did the analysis for 300, so if you double it, it's twice. But is there a number that, for a size of one project, that would be, don't even go there, the cap in your mind?
So I did have a question. Does it just, it's just linear scaling? Okay. So if it's 600 units, it's just twice as much as 300. Okay. Then I don't, yeah, then I think we can do that math. Was there a different upper limit that was discussed at either of the volunteer commissions?
No. The idea was actually they asked for a limit. Yeah. So that's where we came up with that range. That was a previous conversation, not the last one.
Okay. So they wanted a upper limit and this was provided and they approved of this as the upper limit.
And the reason they wanted an upper limit was because they were concerned at what the cost for the city would be.
Yeah. And I think beginning, this is a pilot project. How did, you know, these one or two projects, how did it really impact the community? So we see that at a scale that isn't overwhelming for the current area. I think just like the two versus three, I'm not sure that 400 versus 600 is that much of a difference. You know, it obviously is a little bigger. But if council wanted to suggest a 500 or 600 upper limit, you know, we can, again, look at that and look at that, maybe even present what that means in difference of scale. But like, for instance, the TOD, which I know way too much about from my years here, is, you know, 375 units, right? And that's in two buildings on that lot. So you can just, again, you know, think about that. So that's another, a third building on a lot about that size for 600, right? Around.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make sure that this isn't a limiting factor on a potential development that could prove this out.
Yeah. So the other thing is if it is a project that's 600, 700, 1,000 units, you know, something really large, they could get the pioneer program on the first 400 units. And then they could still build beyond that. But they wouldn't get, they would still have to provide the affordable housing at the levels that are in our current code.
Fantastic.
So it doesn't say if you have more than 400 units. It just means that you will only receive this benefit for up to 400 units.
Great. That satisfies me. So I'm comfortable with the 400. My goal is just not to limit a project from not being able to utilize this and thus not developing.
And that's helpful. I'll spell that out a little better in the future memo.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. I mean, I guess I don't really care very much if it limits since this is a pilot program. So I mean, I think 400 is probably a reasonable max to have it at, especially since we don't want it to have too much of an impact on the other property tax payers it's spread out on and then also our forgone, forgone revenue as well. This is a pilot. We don't have to accomplish everything. I'm okay with 400. But it is helpful to know that those bigger projects wouldn't be completely unable.
Okay. Great. So we're keeping the 400. Clarifying that it could be a bigger project, but this pilot program would only apply in that case to 400 of the units within the program. And so just to be clear, the MFT would only apply to the 400 units, not the whole building.
The MFT would apply for up to 400 units of the eight, yeah, for the, and they have to provide the 8% at 60. So if they had 500, that extra 100 would need to meet the rules of the inclusionary zoning and the bonus density, or development bonus, sorry, we changed that name.
Yeah. I'm not sure you'll be able to split the MFT program, though, for one building, that half of the building applies and the other one. I don't think practically that's how state law would work. It gets pretty complex with that, so.
Yeah. And I don't know. We can check into that with the MFT because, again, there may be, you know, one building has the affordable units, the other one doesn't. We want, obviously, we don't want them to cluster all the affordable housing units in one place. So we'll look into that specific detail. And maybe actually our Phone a Friend knows that answer. I know that in other pioneer programs, I don't think the MFT was as much of a factor, but there were, the projects that used it were larger than what was available as part of the pilot. So do you, I don't know if you, you were taking notes. I'm not sure if you heard the whole question.
I think so. I might want to give it some, you know, try and pencil it out to be sure. But the tax exemptions are usually applied to a whole parcel or a tax parcel. And for it to qualify for a 12-year, sorry, for an eight-year exemption, it would be, you know, then that 8% or whatever percent that is set aside is for the whole project. Then the exemption would apply to all of the residential improvement.
Okay. So it sounds like we probably can't do what we talked about doing a few minutes ago. We can't do, we can't apply the MFT to the first 400 units of a larger project that's all on one parcel.
No. But if, but if the, if the whole project, the whole parcel method eligibility requirements, maybe I'm confusing myself.
I think, yeah. So my, go ahead.
Maybe you could restate it so I could go back and make sure I know what I'm talking about.
So I believe that, based on the earlier comments from Director Dollywell, that if we have a building with more than the 400 units and it's all on one building, it's all on one parcel, so 500-unit building, we could not just apply the MFT to the 400 units that are in the pioneer program.
I don't think so. I'm not sure how that would work, but maybe Brian has a better idea. You could segregate a parcel in some way.
You are welcome to make a quick comment if you can be on the microphone, just so we can tell. Yes, if you can just introduce yourself.
Hi, Brian Runberg again. Okay. I, we don't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we're not going over this amount. So I'm just helping you support what happens in the marketplace. Realistically, any developer would not develop more than 400 units at one time. That's just too many units to deliver to the market. So they would separate in two different buildings.
Okay.
So I don't think you need to worry about that as much as you are.
Okay.
From a market perspective.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. All right. So we're back to our deliberation, though. Do we want, are we okay with the 400-unit cap, recognizing that this is not a cap on what can be developed, it's just for one pioneer program? Okay. So we're okay with the cap? And let's just see if we can agree. Any change of thought on the code location or still both think it should stay in affordability? If so, we'll say that the committee's recommendation is to keep it in affordability. Okay. So we'll keep it in affordability.
I mean, do you feel strongly, like really strongly, that it shouldn't?
I wonder if we could ask our legal counsel, who is not here right now, to make, to just double check, to make sure that there's appropriate wording to the effect that this is going to not be in the code after the two projects.
We've discussed language like that with the city attorney's office, and we don't necessarily need a time limiter built into the code with it because we have the option to remove it at any time or replace the language with either a new program or new code that we want to put in that section.
Okay. Yeah, it's more for expectations if it would be possible. So maybe we can take that back with the intent.
Yeah. And then we would put the time limiter actually as part of the ordinance for adoption of the code.
Yeah. I think under the, we could add a line to say, you know, I didn't already say that it's to encourage development and such, and this program will sunset after it's been used for the provisions that it's allowed under. So even if it is in place and, you know, by the time we come around to changing the code, it's already sunset. So we can work on adding a sentence.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. Let's go with that. Yes, I'm good with that. So then we agree on that one. And then the last one is this 60% at, 60% AMI at 8%. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, just a clarifying question around that. Because the last time this came to us, we were able to, I think it was Arch was there, too. We saw that kind of spectrum of need and we couldn't distinguish between 60 and 80% because it was grouped together. Is that right? Has more data come to light since then or?
No. That's how King County gathers that data, so it's unfortunately together. But we just know in general, you know, somebody who's at 60% AMI can pay less rent and that's harder to find here in Issaquah and throughout the region. And if you think about the workforce, you know, with service industry entry-level jobs, that's more likely at the 60% than the 80%.
Council President Walsh?
So I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Committee for King County. I absolutely know the data on the 60%, you know, like all of that, seeing how the need is. That being said, this, I don't view this, and I think we should remind ourselves, this is not an affordable housing MFT. The goal of this is to get a pioneer project. And I think the pushback that we got from Eco Northwest in their report was we need to be really careful about not putting together a set of requirements that isn't going to pencil out. So in my mind, the affordability that we get on this is a bonus in addition to the fact that we are getting and is coming at a cheap bonus in addition to the development as a pioneer project here. So that would be my thought process.
Councilmember Hall?
Was it Mike? I'm so sorry. From, yeah. So you had said, you know, in the analysis, between the two options, they weren't equivalent. Do we know what would be the equivalent of 10% at 80% AMI?
That's a great question. I'll bring that for our next council.
Actually, I think that would be really helpful. Like if we can't come to alignment on that, perhaps we could figure out what the 60% AMI equivalent would be, bring that to a council. Or if we need to have another.
I'm sorry. So the question is what the 60% values are?
Yeah. So it seemed like we had heard earlier that the value of the units at 60% AMI is not the same as the value of the unit at 80% AMI. So wondering what, how do you tweak the number of 60% AMI units to make it equivalent? Am I saying this right?
Well, what I was thinking was that we could come back and tell you what the percentage of 80 AMI units would deliver the same value as 8% at 60.
So instead of decreasing the 60%, you would increase the 80% requirements. Is that correct, what you're saying? Because he's saying that 60% option provides more value to the residents and city than the 80% needs to increase. So that's increasing that requirement.
It might be 12% at 80 or something.
It sounds like from dollars' perspective, there's got to be an analysis that shows this is how much, you know, it's going to cost the developer to provide 60% and equal apples to apples if you want to raise it to 80% AMI, that what percentage of those two equates equally on the developer's side, as well as from a community's perspective, you know, we know the need, we know what needs to be done. I think I want to address the Eco Northwest report that has come out a few times tonight. What they were tasked to do was to look at our housing strategies program and see if we could expand our inclusionary zoning. So they weren't looking at, and currently we have inclusionary zoning. You have to provide X number of affordable units. And then you get this incentive, which is the development density bonus, to say your base height goes up, because otherwise I think it's 65 feet and you can build more units up above. But in response to that, you have to have 20% of the area dedicated to affordable housing. We know those numbers need a look at. We didn't have an incentive of MFT. So one of the recommendations from Eco Northwest was how do you incentivize to get? how do you incentivize to get the policy objectives that the city needs to work towards? So, they never came to a conclusion of 60%, 80% percentage or anything. That is going to come with the future work the council has funded for analysis, and I think you all, you know, prioritize the recommendations that we need to spend time looking on for Eco Northwest. So, there was not a conclusion, what percentage of AMI is going to work or not work. It was, they just said, there's no point in expanding your inclusionary zoning until you work through some of this.
And I would just like to add that when we did the analysis with Arch and their model, the 8% at 60 and 10% at 80 was, for the developer, an equal value that we determined. So, it is, as Mike said, a value to the community that's a little higher at the 60%. So, again, this is where we had probably seven options that we worked through, and so, really would like some clarity of how, what you would like us to do if additional analysis is requested.
Okay, so it sounds like the analysis has been, has been done. This is what, for the developer, these two options are, same similar cost. Yeah, so I think I'm back to, in the community, there's a real need for the lower AMI, for the people that are making those, you know, those entry-level workers, those people that are making less money. I also just did some, a little bit of back-of-the-envelope math. So there's, if we had the 8% of 400 units, that's 32 units. If it's 10%, that's 40 units. So we're talking about a difference of eight units, but then we're talking about, you know, all of them being 60% AMI, or all of them being 80% AMI. So, I, my preference is the 60%, because I think we will learn with this program, and that's part of why it's a pilot or a Pioneer program, but I also think that that's something we know we need.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's tough. I still feel, it seemed like there was consensus relatively among PPC and definitely Economic Vitality Commission and the people that we're hearing from, professional developers. They want the option, so I felt like honoring that seemed like the best policy. Maybe, maybe this, maybe this requires some more gnawing from the full council. Kind of a question that maybe sets up for the council to decide. Because I can see both ways. I mean, clearly, there's more value to the community for 60% AMI. I don't think anyone's in disagreement. Yeah, I think, sorry, we're not providing you with very helpful feedback.
No, that's okay. I mean, if you want this to come to full council's discussion, I just, if you wanted additional, if you wanted additional analysis, that's what I wanted to be clear on, because, you know, that whole thing of, you know, what about 7% at this percentage, you know? We've kind of been through the wringer a bit with that, and Arch has a model, the developer shared input on that. So, these, again, these are the two that came out, as these seem to be, will work for developer. But again, every development is different, and I think that's a little bit of where Economic Vitality and PPC, you know, with the options, because things are so, you know, different here and there, so.
So, the schedule-wise, Jen, this item is moving to, depending on what action is taken today, committee or the whole, or the regular meeting?
Regular meeting on the 18th of March.
18th, but there is a March meeting for PDE prior to that. If you want us to come back with more information, we could do that in March? To this committee? Do you want more analysis, or?
The March meeting of this committee is currently canceled, so we would have to bring it back for this one question.
Well, maybe I'll ask, I guess that all then rests on whether or not we have more requests for information or questions to ask for staff to go back and come back. So, it sounded like it is actually equivalent, based on the analysis that staff's done, not, not equivalent. And it seemed to like, Director Dollywell, from your comments, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like there was some hesitancy in doing, like, deeper analysis work, because that's what comes after this incentive project, because we're trying to right-size inclusionary zoning and figuring out what the right levels are there. So, it seemed like, is that right? Like, you didn't necessarily want us to get too far into that analysis, because that's already coming, maybe separate from this pilot project?
No, I think I just wanted to kind of correct the word Eco Northwest, where they left off, that they didn't get into. And then, you know, one of the recommendations is to incentivize some of this, in which the incentive here is an MFTE. So, that is a give on the city's part. The other, you know, you're getting away with the development density bonus requirements, you don't have to do the percentage that the current code requires, so just testing that out. I think most of the focus on the Pioneer project, though, has been tied to affordable housing piece. Even though the intent, I think, is, as discussed tonight, is first in the market, but the give and take of what the levers are being adjusted to test whether it's going to pencil out in the marketplace or not, have been tied to affordable housing. So the, and then the incentivizing the MFTE. Those are the only, right, Jen? Those are the things that have been kind of adjusted in the standard, or just the affordable housing?
And I think it related that we will, you know, CPD will be looking at further levers in the housing analysis, right? So that's a longer, deeper discussion, not just about this, you know, pilot or this area, but Central Issaquah as a whole.
Council President Walsh?
I think where I'm ending up is just, I'm a little bit gun-shy of proposing something with too deep of requirements, and I guess even use of the word "too deep" as a phrase suggests I've got something there in my mind, but that the project wouldn't get used, or the program wouldn't get used, we wouldn't have a project built, because that's what we've been dealing with so long with the inclusionary zoning. Now, I appreciate the commentary that we've got a giveaway of the MFTE, we've got a giveaway of not requiring the higher percentage of units at a lower AMI. So there's a lot that we're adjusting at this time. So even the 8% at 60% AMI is better than the requirement that we had in Central Issaquah of the inclusionary zoning of 12.5% at 60% AMI. So, I'm just super hesitant to not have anything used, but I guess probably comfortable with the 60%, given that we're already moving from the 12.5 to 8, and have an MFTE giveaway.
Okay, so I think we've ruled out needing more information for the full council. So, we don't need that. It does look like all of the data, as far as what 80% and what 60% median income is, is all available to us as well, I'm just looking at that. So, it's really just what we, what we think. We can also, we can also bring that we had a long discussion about it at committee, and we had two people, you know, varying spectrum of opinions. We can, we can bring that, if you, if that's where we land.
So would you like us to ask the full council, then, to make that decision, and kind of bring both, or?
Well, so this is going back to full council. I think that the administration, it seems to me that the administration's recommendation is likely to be the same as it was here. And so then, when it comes time for me to, as chair, to speak, I'll talk about this conversation, and that we were not of one mind. And then council can discuss, but I think everything else we address. Okay, so does staff have what you need on this item?
Okay, wonderful. Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering, sometimes it's helpful to have, like, potential amendment, since we've had these conversations up here about potentially changing this. So if, in the agenda pack, I want to come back to full council, it'd be helpful to have potential amendment language.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, great. Then we have one more item of business, which is the ID 1581 Conference Plan Update, Draft Economic Vitality Element, and this is presented by Stephen. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Chair Hunt. Good evening. Give me one second to get connected. Good evening, committee members. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the draft goals and policies for the Economic Vitality Element for the Conference Plan periodic update. There are two questions posed to committee members tonight. Are there additional considerations that the Economic Vitality Commission should study prior to finalizing the recommendations to city council? And are there additional topics for staff to consider when making final edits to the draft? So background information on the development of the, of this draft element, similar to how we approached and designed a lot of the draft elements for the conference plan that this committee has reviewed last fall-winter. We looked at restructuring, we looked at coordination across the different elements, but we also wanted to coordinate the development of the goals and policies in time with the development of the Economic Development Action Plan as well. And so, a lot of the feedback that was collected as part of the community engagement for the action plan did feed into a lot of our discussions and the analysis that was done for the goals and policies for the, for the draft element as well. So we met with the Economic Vitality Commission five times last year, prior to PPC reviewing all the goals and policies on October 26, and we had different discussions on how to approach the restructure of the element, as well as the subsections that you're going to present tonight. And all the recommendations from Economic Vitality and the Planning Policy Commission are incorporated into the draft language. So the recommended changes include complete restructure of a lot of the subsections for this element, so that it was consistent with how we were approaching, or at least economic development was approaching, the action plan. There also is consolidation of a lot of policies just for redundancy that we found from within this element, but also, when we were looking at coordination of policies across the different elements, we found some redundancy in terms of items that we saw on the land use element, or items that were being developed as part of the new environment and climate element as well. We also incorporated an accountability, results and accountability goal and policy, similar to how we incorporated into the other draft elements, just for consistency, but also as our strategy of identifying where, which functional plans are being used to implement this. And then finally, we incorporated new policies related to regional coordination and consistency of language with the climate action. So I'm going to start going through the goals and policies, and then be open for questions on how we approach the draft element. So for the section Strong Business Climate Goal A, we updated this goal for clarity, primarily with the development of this subsection. We wanted to make sure that the goal was specific to these policies. The policies A1 and A4, we consolidated, just because we felt the language is very similar, and we wanted to make sure that there was one policy focused on customer service, and we felt that, from the recommendations from EVC and from PPC, that review timelines was an important aspect of the customer service for business. We included new details about addressing economic trends with policy A6, and then we updated the intent with policy A7 around what we wanted from the tax. And then for policies A2 and A3, we updated the language for clarity, but also consistency of language with the transportation element, as well as with the utilities and capital element. And then finally, we proposed to remove the policy B6, because it's very similar language to what we have in the land use. And then for business climate, we are proposing two new policies, one related to innovative tools to enhance economic development, as well as making sure that economic impacts are considered in city decision-making process. For diverse business community, we updated this goal, also to be specific for this subsection. We incorporated with policy D5 as an area of making sure that all businesses have access to the services that the city is wanting to offer. And then policies B1 and 3 were updated for clarity and simplification, so that they were specific to the natural strengths of the city, as well as how we want to grow and attract business. Policy D3 was also updated to recognize the importance of experiences as part of the business climate. And we are proposing to remove policy D7, because it's similar to policies in the previous section. And then we included a little bit of more language on clarity for how we want to support industry clusters as an importance for city Issaquah. And we're proposing policy X2, highlighting the importance of sustainable practices for businesses as kind of coordination with the environment and climate element. So for Vibrant Community, goal D, we wanted to simplify the language around quality of life for businesses, as well as identifying for D6, making sure visitor destinations was highlighted as important for this, for Issaquah. For policies C4, 5, and 6, we consolidated, just because they had very similar language around employment opportunities and the balance of housing and jobs. For policies D4 and 2, we updated to make sure that it was clear on the intent for outdoor recreation and the relationship between neighborhoods and business. We're proposing to remove policy D8, as it is very close to this language we have in the parks element and the land use element. And then we wanted to simplify the language for D1 around the importance of arts, history, and culture with businesses. For Partnerships, goal C, we updated the language for, this is a brand-new section for this element, so we updated the goals to be consistent with all the policies we consolidated to this section. Policies A5 and C1, we simplified and reduced some of the language, so that it's more specific and intentional with the language. We're proposing to remove policies B2, C2, and C3, primarily because it was, there was redundancy with policies that were already in this element, as well as policies that were in the land use. We are also proposing to remove policies B4, because it was also similar to language that we see in the land use. And we're proposing two new policies, X3 and X4, for consistency with environment and climate element, as well as making sure that we are identifying regional collaboration as a important aspect for business development. And then finally, we have the results and accountability section, which is consistent with the changes we're making with the other elements to identify how we plan to implement this goal and identify the functional plans that we're using to do that. So the overall schedule remains the same. We are finalizing council committee review this quarter, and then we are aiming to have council adoption of the periodic update for the conference plan around third quarter this year. Next steps for the conference plan is we'll be bringing the Human Services, Arts, Culture elements to the Services Safety and Parks Council Committee later this month, and the parks elements to that committee in March. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Stephen. Do we have questions? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, yeah, just a quick process one. So, are, is staff already planning on returning the Economic Vitality Commission, or is that just dependent on whether or not we have anything we need to flag for them?
It'll be primarily dependent if we have any additional policy questions for them, but they're, they're very comfortable with what we've presented tonight.
Okay.
Okay, great. No questions? Okay.
All right, well, it sounds like we don't have any more questions. So on this one, we will move into public comments. I will note for the record, there are no members of the public in council chambers any longer. And I will check in with the city clerk if there is anyone online that might want to make a comment.
Chair Hunt, we have no members of the public online either.
Great, then we will move into council deliberation. And, okay, and we have two questions. Are there additional considerations that the EVC should study? And if there are any additional topics? Councilmember Hall.
Well, now I feel bad that I'm already planning to go EVC because I highlighted a couple that I'd like staff or EVC to noodle on. So, and bear with me. So the first one is under goal A. Number A2 is about the multimodal mobility system. And it just calls out biking, walking, and use of transit. And I wonder if we can't be a little bit more inclusive of how transportation innovations are just, what are they, right? Micro mobility, other evolving mobility trends. I brought this up also because there was similar language with the transportation element. So I just wonder if we can have kind of a parody of the language there as things change.
Yeah, we can do that and make sure it's consistent.
Thank you. B3, oh, B3 was the word, just grow and attract businesses. The word diverse was removed from the original goal or reoriginal policy that I think potentially could add some value by including it. I mean, essentially, right now, it's goods and services that meet community needs or that the community want to see. I can't remember exactly what it was in there. But that might not necessarily be aligned with having like a diverse set of goods and services that serve our future needs too, especially like if all we want is bars and pizza shops that might not serve as our kind of long-term needs, right? So I was just thinking something to noodle on, maybe the word diverse there could be helpful. B4, oh, B4 was one that was removed in the diverse business community section because it was recognized in A5, which is the facilitate innovative partnerships with the private sector. So B4 had originally had kind of that land use kind of element, like ensure that development and redevelopment is using land efficiently. So I don't know if I have a strong opinion on this, but you do lose a little bit of that land use context by merging it with A5. So I wasn't sure if EVC had an opinion about this or staff had an opinion about whether or not there's any value in having that context live in A5 about innovative partnerships or we're happy with kind of the land use element. Something about that living in the land use element. X2, where was X2? Oh, that's also in diverse in goal B. X2 was build awareness and shared accountability for sustainable business practices. I don't know if that necessarily just means environmental sustainability or if it's also like fiscal or business sustainability practices there. I didn't know if there was value in calling out exactly what we mean by that or just intentionally being broad, especially because on the next page for X3, we do call out environmental sustainability. So if we're calling out sustainability again in goal B, maybe just being intentional about why are we adding that? And then the only other thing I added was to chew on whether or not you think there's any value in including some reference to the green necklace in here. You know, in the transportation element, it was included, called out very specifically because it's also a trail system that supports our mobility around town. And so I was just wondering if there's any value in calling it out as a way to connect our business communities around town too. And if not, the walking part of policy A2 may have that covered already. But I'll leave that to you.
Those are great comments. Thank you.
I mean, I'm just generally pleased that I'm seeing much more pursue and leverage and advance and things like that rather than just support and seek. I think generally this moves forward in the directions and does seem to have a lot of the connections between the, I want to say, environmental report, economic development action plan? Yeah, thanks. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted one more thing. I totally forgot to say thank you and that it looks excellent. These were just, I've just been nitpicky with all of the other elements, so I thought I would here too. But seriously, excellent work. I've really loved, as we're doing the comp plan updates, seeing like the thorough matrix and the annotated version. It's been really helpful for us to study. Thank you.
Great, so similar. I think it's, I think it's great. I think there's a few things that are also pretty minor. So I think I don't really actually need to get into them, but just a few places where I thought, so I'll just give you one example. The leverage, the arts, the D1. It says leverage the robust arts, history, and cultural opportunities to provide experiences and entrepreneurial opportunities. And then previously, it was working with the private sector and other stakeholders continue to encourage and promote robust arts, history, and cultural opportunities. I actually think they kind of changed because this one is that you're leveraging the arts to provide experiences, whereas the other one is more to encourage and promote the arts. So I think in that case it was, and then it says the intent is to simplify. So I thought that actually in that one, I kind of liked the first one better because I think it was more what I thought. I liked what it said better. But I think overall, I was mostly focusing on the matrix. It's very clear why things were changed in the matrix, which I appreciate. And for the most part, you know, it seems like a lot of the changes were to encourage diversity of businesses, be welcoming and inclusive. And I think that's great. And then also added in those sustainability elements. I like the thought of the green necklace. I don't know if staff has thoughts on if that makes sense to include. But we did have discussions during Title 18 about making sure that businesses, you know, as developments go in, that they know where the green necklace connections are and that where we want to have connections. So if you think that might fit in somehow, I'd be interested in hearing staff's thoughts on that.
I think overall, we were just trying to reduce the similar language. So the policy A2 being focused on the multimodal system captures a lot of what's talked about, particularly in the transportation element and the parks element, of what we're trying to get at the green necklace. But we're happy to add a policy or build in language in either A2 or something in this element that talks specifically to the green necklace.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would be interested in that. I think there's currently a fair amount of promoting the outdoor recreation elements. And, you know, and so I think that is meant to be one of our big outdoor recreation amenities. So I would be interested if there's a way to work that in. But I think otherwise, I don't have any, any other edits. Okay, all right, great. Well, do you have what you need from us?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, then there are no further items. So let me just check the agenda. Do we have any announcements? No announcements. Then this meeting is adjourned at 8:10 PM. Thank you. Good night.